The committee, the committee of the whole to order.
United States of America into the Republic which stands obligation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Trustee Monica. Trustee Penny Correll.
Present.
Trustee Brewer. Trustee Bowen.
Here.
Pleasure to be along.
Here.
For my present supervisor.
Here.
Thank you. A motion to excuse trustee Brewer's voting going to be in order.
So.
Is there support?
Support.
There is support. I was prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say aye. Motion carried. We have the agenda before, so the additions and additions. So, this part.
Part.
There is support. I was prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say aye. Motion carries public comment. If I hear the audience speak, that's in anyone. In the audience this time, we have the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of things. Number one, you may have read in my manager's report, we did it for the laborly intermediate east in the school backroom that are currently under construction, so they don't look like much yet. They have all been gutted, but.
They still look better than they are.
So, very exciting. They're still, they say they're still on pace to be completed in six or eight weeks or so, and definitely interested in doing a ribbon cutting in coordination without the township, so that'll be pretty exciting project and appreciate the work of Laborly in that partnership we have with their bond, community bonding proposal, and that'll be very helpful for for our aquatics program. And then second, if in just the last couple of weeks, Gary Bozick has been back in and out of the hospital battling infections trying to keep him in your thoughts. I spoke with him the other day and he sounded pretty strong and just, you know, trying to get out of the hospital to, you know, just get some clarity on what's going on, but so hopefully he's just a typical Gary, asking questions about work and wanting to get back forward, so. With that, be happy to answer any questions on the board.
Thank you for letting us know. We really appreciate that.
Let's see another question. We'll move on to the discussion today, which is the update of the Saguaro corridor highway authority. It is, we wanted an update on what's the status of all the various lawsuits that are pending right now concerning their project. What does it mean for the future development of the project? And then how does that play into the overall redevelopment of the corridor? So that we have Jessica Wood from Dickinson, right? And we have Suzanne Schultz, who's been our consultant all along. So then I guess we'll start with Jessica to give us the rundown on the status of all the various lawsuits currently in effect on the project.
Okay, and I know this is not going to seem like a kind of seeming like summary, but it is, so. Oh, you got some, okay. Their microwave top. I promise you, it's a little bare bone.
And, and we're just looking for an update.
I know it's allowed to digest and certainly you're going to have to take some look at it, but this is honestly just almost a transcript-like reflection of seven different lawsuits that are in place, so if you have any questions, please let me know. If you want to delve in to any of the details of the particular arguments being made and the relationship between the various parties. I just want to point out at the top that, again, just because we summarized what we see in the pleadings, these are just allegations, so just, just because they're written here, they're not facts necessarily. They have not been proven out. We are just repeating what the parties are alleging against each other, so please keep that in mind when you're reading this. This is not by any means done. So, I thought it would be helpful at the very beginning, and I'm not going to read through this because that would take up all of our time tonight, obviously, and you're going to need to do that, but the parties and relationships are summarized on page one because they're so complex. So that very first list is just the various parties here. And as you may have guessed, there are all sorts of different corporate forms that are created whenever a development takes place. And so there are all sorts of limited liability companies, one and two and three, and then lawsuits back and forth between them. Now, here is the good news, I suppose, in all of this, and that is that this is frankly not that, I don't know if this is good news or not, not that uncommon, that developers get into fights. And so, not at all that uncommon that they're fighting with each other about who owns this property and who should get to own it and finish the project. Obviously, the township is not a party. Is not involved in any way in this litigation. Because the township has no contractual obligation to any of these parties. I just want to be really clear about that. We can talk about that at length if you want to. So, there's not any mention or reference to the township in here whatsoever. Other than you are the place where they started this development. I think the other silver lining here is that they are fighting tooth and nail to try to win this project. So, all of these different entities want it, and so that's why they're fighting to try to get ownership so that they can, right? I mean, if they didn't want it, everyone would walk away, and instead they are trying very hard to obtain ownership. And so, I think that's another, I guess, somewhat positive way to look at it. So I know this is seven pages, maybe again down to five. Detailed information about these lawsuits, and it's going to take you some time to look at it. I suppose it's too early to ask if you have any questions about this.
Well, I think you need to kind of walk us through a little bit.
Sure, okay.
Through it, it's kind of like, you know, it's far more complicated with the various owners than I even realized in terms of the various entities that have been created and were all a part of it.
Right.
It's just.
I'm trying to think how to summarize this.
I think if I could.
Yeah.
So, some of these complaints are more dealing with the, you know, the business side of it and and what happened in phases one and two and transactional things. The, kind of the updated cases or probably of more interest to us is more so the that the court appointed, appointed a receiver in the summer, and then in September, the receiver moved to sell both some of the remaining parcels in phase one and phase two. Now, if you can see this, I can bring it up on the screen if we have to, but in the, the pink area is phase one and phase two. And then the receiver also sold the option to purchase the rest of this property, which is owned by the I's or Unified Group in here. So, with that, then, and Jessica can better explain that because it's very complex. The one of the partners in the K2 regime, not Chris Kristowski, was awarded the, the sale of the receivership, so Chris immediately filed suit against appealed the decision and filed suit against the the, the new owner and the Unified Group, Unified Group filed, canceled the option to purchase due to non-performance and filed suit to protect their claim of that property. And then the new owner also sued, so that the new owner has been involved with the project. He was Chris's initial partner in this, so as a, as a backdrop, that's probably at least the piece over the property is of the most interest to the township moving forward, and that is also tying it up so that none of the parties, the township, well, we're not a party, but it, it puts us in a position of not knowing who has current ownership in a waiting period as, as the other three parties are as, as well.
Okay, just, so the I family is, what'd you say there?
There.
And this is all unified?
Unified.
Okay, and then this Jerome Meskowsky and Chris were the original K2? He's not part of the finance group that would, I thought all along, the split was between the finance group and Chris or between K2? But it's actually between the two K2 partners?
No, both.
A better equal?
Oh, the.
Okay, where in all of this is the finance group? What's their name? I've lost them.
LIP West Lansing.
Okay, so they're the finance.
That, that is the group that had Kevin Baker.
Right.
Was a guy, and so they do have suits with between those as well.
I, you know, that's when we receive these complaints, I asked for them, Brian gave me the board. I went through them. We're applying to call and I summarized them much like you did, Jessica. And it is very common, and it's also it's probably easier to understand through a diagram. But there's entities, and then there's two entities make up that entity, and then there's an entity that makes up, you know, a third part, and and so that's where it gets very confusing, and this Meskowsky is in it in several different levels. What is, one, not the least of being that he did a a commissary note. He gave Stopkins hundred and seventy thousand dollars or something like that. And it was supposed to be returned in a number of days, and it wasn't. So that initiated one of those additional lawsuits that we have that we see before us here. So, this is quite a mess, and we can get into the weeds on this. But my intention was, was to figure out where they're at. What's the position of the township, both legally and from a policy point of view? So I want to I want to dwell on that eventually, you know, from a policy perspective. And what's in the best interest of the township? But I need to know what the weeds are, understand what's going on a little bit, not in detail. I mean, the allegations are skating. And there was every name in the book that was thrown out there, but again, they're allegations. And the interesting part is, in one of the initial countersuits by Mr. Kristowski, was that he's suing a partner, of which he's a co-partner in, so he's suing himself.
Right, well, that's what corporations do, right?
Right.
Yourself up into different corporate.
Right, and that's what makes it so, you know, it's a spin your head, and I said, okay, so how does that work? And and, and that was the initial allegations, and then we've had this receivership, so I have a legal question. So how did the court point a receiver with? There was no trial, there was no judgment, but the court did it through, what, the agreement of the parties?
Right, so the parties must have briefed it, and then the judge can make that decision without a jury or anything. The judge can make.
Just appoint a receiver and decide out as all the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sure the party submitted briefs and argued about it.
Yeah.
Not as if someone just marched in there and the other, the other party didn't have an opportunity to respond. But after legal briefing and argument, a receiver can be appointed.
So it acts as an arbiter and just makes the decisions and that's the way.
Necessarily, more of a manager of the case.
Okay.
Yeah, so there are a few things, if you look at the things that are coming up here in terms of the timeline. There's a case evaluation coming up in January. They have to buy a lot of this for some summary disposition, and then apparently there is a trial, they said.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, for March. Now, whether or not they'll get there is another question. Their summary disposition motions could dispose of this sooner.
And just one last question before we round robin this. Is there any other parties that have their fingers in this besides these original partners? Has anybody else come in? And then expressed an interest to somehow acquire, you know, these parcels or whatever, besides the original before of different partners that was originally part of Delta Crosses?
No, if you phrase it that way, there are related parties in this litigation, but they've been sort of thrown in on the side. For example, K2 Retail sued Roar Gasoline Equipment and Unified Group to foreclose on a construction lien, so there's different parties all scattered throughout. But no, that the main parties that you're familiar with are the ones who are still fighting over who gets to finish the project.
Because we had heard that there was a group out of Florida that wanted to purchase this, this.
Okay, that wasn't evident from the court filings, but it could be true.
Okay.
If so, they're not involved in this, yeah.
Right.
Right. So, it says here, the receiver was appointed because of alleged breach of contract and damages. So even though none of this has been proven or ruled on or anything, that both parties are okay going ahead with the receiver, because the last we heard before all this dropped, you know, they had the option to buy all that land, they were going to develop it, all this sort of thing, and then all of a sudden, they're losing everything. Is that, is that accurate, that it's a money issue? How they lost all the land?
Um, I don't know that they lost all the land. I don't know if that's an accurate.
They didn't, they didn't own it, but it was contract.
Yeah.
The yellow part.
The yellow part was they were under contract and purchased it.
Okay.
So, the receiver I believe was appointed because there is, there is these questions over who is actually the controlling partner or who should control the property and control the option to purchase.
Based on the name that was on the option, okay.
Yes, so that, that was sold as part of the receivership. The Unifying Group who holds that in the time that this was going through the court, they canceled the option to sell this to either party or through the receiver
Okay.
for non-performance. We didn't speak to their attorney, and they, they have an interest in seeing the the, the project finished or it developed. They don't necessarily care, they're protecting their interests. They were immediately sued by both parties, and so they, they, I don't think they care who comes out with it. They want, they want to sell it, but they want to protect their rights and.
So they canceled the, the contract after the receivership was appointed?
I don't know at what point they canceled it.
I believe it was after the receiver was appointed. So the receiver was appointed, auctioned a few parcels in phase one and two. Then the Unified Group terminated the action agreement. And then Kristowski and Meskowsky both sued each other and the Unified Group. So Meskowsky was awarded phase one and two. The, the red parts there by the receivership?
He would, he was awarded what was remaining of phase one and two. There's only, I think I think there's maybe three small parcels as part of that.
Okay. So there are different pieces of land that we're talking about here too, so, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
It is honestly one of the most complex pieces of litigation, you know, it's, it's just a mess because again, everybody's suing everybody else. That being said, if we could just go high level for a minute. Again, the township is nowhere in these proceedings, and that's because you don't have any sort of contractual obligation for any of these parties. It doesn't matter that they are mentioned in detail in your plan. It doesn't matter. They were, certainly you anticipated that this development would go through, just as whenever you put together a development plan or a TIF plan, you project things. It's a plan. It is not a contract and it's not a guarantee. So, I think that is just important to keep in mind. Again, we never entered into the development and reimbursement agreement because we never got there. We had, when drafted, it was highly protective of the township. And we pushed and pushed, and you know, it didn't get signed. You thought their attorney was reviewing it. And then, you know, we learned about this litigation. So there was a lot going on behind the scenes that even the partners didn't know about. So, and just as part of the plan, I think it's important to point out, again, this is just a projection. It's just a generic document, really. That if you look specifically at some important wording in on page 12 where it talks about the estimated costs and financing, and it's set forward how some of the reimbursements are anticipated to go. And one of the things that it says is the amount and source of any tax increment revenues that will be used for purposes authorized by this plan and the terms and conditions for such use. And upon any reimbursement of the expenses permitted by the plan will be provided solely under the development and reimbursement agreement contemplated by this plan. So in other words, if you're going to get any money, like we're contemplating here, it's going to be pursuant to a contract that we enter with you, all the development and reimbursement. If you don't agree with us to our terms in one of those, you don't get anything. And so this entire document in terms of the reimbursement provisions is subject to really that line.
I haven't reviewed the development plan recently, but I recall that there was a number of tables for projected developments, timelines, added value, passive value, that's just one of them. And in those was the reimbursement expectations. And Brian himself said that by adopting this development plan, there is an expectation that there'll be reimbursement, so long as it's in accordance with what the development plan and how it was laid out in that document, including all the attachments and all of those. So yes, we can say those are eligible costs. We could say we've changed our mind. But there's a credibility issue, you know, if we go down that path. So the thing is, if they're living, if they've lived up to it, then we could say, well, it didn't necessarily meet our timeline exactly in a reasonable sense, so we're not going to give you as much, but that would be a hard sell for us to maintain.
But who do we have a development plan with?
No, we would have, is what I'm saying.
But we don't have one, so as far as living up to expectations, if you.
Can I, can I finish? Can I finish?
But if you never sign a contract.
I would like to ask her, I would like to ask her, if you're the attorney here, then have at it.
Go ahead and ask, but you're saying that we have.
You haven't even listened to my.
We have a question, but I'm just saying we haven't signed anything.
Okay, you have four speaker.
I don't have anything to add, I'm just saying, you're saying that we have expectations. She has said that the development agreement is a document that you have a contract with whomever you contract with, so that's where your expectations are. We have no development agreement with anybody. So there are no expectations that if we decide to go back on, we haven't signed a deal with anybody, so there's nothing to go back on, so that was just what I'm making here.
You don't understand the context of my question. I guess I'm not allowed to complete the question.
Let, let me see if I can. Let me see if I can clarify. Would it be prudent for us to revise our development plan to take out specific names of money, of projects that we're going to spend money on, not the, you know, where we're capturing, obviously that has to be specific? But would it be prudent of us to protect ourselves, to take out specific names of properties and developments and that sort of thing? Going forward, just to protect ourselves in case there is some concern about, yeah, there was an expectation here, even if there was no contract or.
So you're actually supposed to delineate the projects that you anticipate coming. In other words, I'm just thinking out loud here, but if something isn't mentioned, at least in generic terms in a plan, then you're not supposed to reimburse. In other words, it's got to, your ideas have to be set forward here. But they don't have to say Delta Crossing on them. Couldn't it say?
They're usually.
Retail development? Um, it, it could, it could be as generic as that, yes. They're usually a little more specific than that, though. Just telling you totally objectively, they usually do get pretty specific. But if you, you know, if it gave you more comfort level to remove specific references, you could, although again, in your TIF plan, you're still going to have pretty specific projections, which may or may not bear out, right? I mean, those are always just, again, projections, and depending on the economy and property values, those watch weight all the time, so. So yeah, there's a spectrum in terms of detail that goes into this stuff. And if it would give you more comfort, although again, I can tell you with confidence that you're not obligated to anyone out here. I know what it looks like if someone were just to read this and not understand that it's a plan that's written in accordance with you know, part six of Act 57 of 2018, and it's supposed to contain these, that's why there's specific MCL references throughout this. Because it's, it's coming right out of the statute. Like here are our ideas for project, here's what we anticipate doing. But yeah, could the language be more generic? It could, but again, there's a real spectrum of plans that are out there.
But a real spectrum of.
Of specificity.
Yeah, but a spectrum too of, you know, developments that go forward or don't go forward and get sued or don't get sued, and so.
Absolutely, yeah. And as far as this being like something that someone could sue on, not a chance, you know, not a chance. And that's why frankly, you're not a development. And, and frankly, even if you did have a development agreement, development agreements are filled with conditions. So, and the one that we drafted for the township frankly was one of the toughest ones we've ever drafted in terms of like timelines, documentation that they would have had to provide, jobs created, not being able to, you know, being penalized for inviting businesses to move from other locations within the township. I mean, we really pushed the envelope in terms of the conditions. Which might have been why they never didn't sign, maybe, in part, also because the stuff was going on behind the scenes, but so that's really where your, kind of your safety net is. But I do, I do recognize how it looks on the surface. It looks like if someone were to just read this plan, it's like, oh, look at all these plans, you know, it's an agreement, but it's not. Thank you, so.
Very good, Chris. I, I was just for clarity, because it's not binding, because it never was signed by either.
The, the township agreement?
Right, yeah, township or.
Yeah.
The, who we presented or in, and who we're entering into an agreement with, since all of that really has no legs, for lack of a better expression. Is there any reason why we would start flexing around with it now to change it?
The plan, you mean?
Yeah.
Um, I think just because, you know, the optics are making people uncomfortable. I mean, I'm not suggesting you do it. I know it takes time and money to amend a plan, and so.
Right.
But that would be the reason, just, but it might even be a little premature because honestly, you've got a trial set for March. And, you know, I, who knows how this is going to go, but you might have a project back.
Well, yeah, and I don't, I would do, why, I'm trying to grasp why we would make changes when we don't know what we're going.
It's going to result in a litigation.
Right, so I'm trying to follow this conversation along and it just seems really premature.
Well, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting you necessarily need to.
Asking for clarity, is there any good reason to do it now, especially when you say. It costs us a lot of money to change a plan and then possibly, well, for real, after March, we're gonna be changing again. Will we know what we actually are working with, so that's where I'm.
I think it's probably a little premature to change, in my opinion, just because. Again, depending on what happens with the motions for summary disposition, that could eliminate. Some of the issues right out of the gate in courts and we're gonna end up, so. Now granted, this is worded such that, um, it defines the property owner is unified, I believe. Yeah, unified group LLC. But again, property owners change hands all the time, and that doesn't mean the project hadn't been envisioned as is required by the statute. For purposes involving them, so. I don't know, that was a really wordy way of answering your question, but.
Okay, so I, that helps, thank you.
Was just gonna add on, so when we, when we created the CIA, remember, part of the, part of the vision was. And a lot of times you create these before there's a project, in this case, we had a project and we. Um, created the CIA one to, uh, because. To help the development go faster, so it did not lag on for four years. Um, also to influence how, how the project went, but, and then also to leverage that project for. Um, helping the rest of the corridor, so leveraging some of that capture, so. Um, as a standard right now, we're not capturing as much as we would have, um, we're not out at any reimbursement. So I think, I think some of the concern is, if I'm hearing correctly. Uh, from some board members is just that as the plan is written. Or how it looks, at that point, we were anticipating a project. We were careful to put the projects as, uh, these are all within public rights ways. All the, all the project categories are eligible projects in TIP. Uh, language, but because we identified some of the dollars, I think some of the concern is that. If the project starts up again, that it automatically reverts back to these numbers that were in the plan. Um, which is not necessarily the case, so if, if there is, if the project starts back up. Whether it's the original owners, whether it's a new owner or a different project. It basically starts over, they, they can have some approach and ask for something, but. It doesn't necessarily mean that anything has to be, um, funded at any of these levels. Or at all, if it's purely the obligation, it's purely the, uh, um. You know, within the term determination of the board, and I keep in mind, as I said, one of the. The initial project had timelines for creating value, which a lot of the plan was based on, so that is. Not happening, obviously at that level, so that's about to make up that ground. Andre, Griffin?
So just trying to understand, I mean, clearly, it sounds like we need to be patient and, and wait for some resolution on these legal challenges. You mentioned, um, you know, there may be some insights from the summary dispositions. But if it rolls to trial, is there any sense of like the timeline for that, or is that just gonna wide open?
Kind of wide open because it's not at all uncommon for people to ask. To postpone trial and there's discovery battles and all of that. Very few things actually go to trial for them for it because it's so expensive. And so it's likely that if this, these issues don't get disposed of at the summary disposition stage. It's still likely that they might reach settlement prior to March or shortly thereafter.
That's helpful to know.
It's kind of a crafty, really, it, um, depends on the judge and how patient they are and so forth.
It is this, but there are different judges in these places.
Yeah, right, so it depends on each judge and. Each county.
Yeah, most of the, most of the business and partnership cases are in Oakland County. Um, the construction liens and then the, uh, resulting lawsuit. The, the receiver was appointed out of Oakland County, the resulting lawsuits are now in Eden.
County, and they're still trying to get the, change some of the Oakland County cases transferred to Eden County, aren't they? So they could, it, it ended up changing venue, but then it's successful.
And that's hard to do, I don't know that that will be successful, I think there, you know, if you're like forum shopping, that's pretty hard to do, so. Also, the parties might run out of, you know, the appetite to spending all this money out fighting.
Well, which, which is the other thing, do they have the money to keep suing each other, you know, without, but at some point, their money runs out, what would you think? I guess that's up to them.
And just real quick to correct something I said earlier with the, the receiver. Um, the properties in phase one and phase two, a lot of those have already been sold to other private entities. But as far as, uh, still being owned by K two or that, there's five parcels. Uh, so there's one on the north side of Hobby Lobby, there's one, a gap in that phase one building. Um, there's two smaller parcels up by the road and then the, and then phase two, the at-home. Site is still in, within the K two name or what has now been transferred to the receivership. And to, uh, WL acquisitions.
So, this is a, this is an important head question. The taxes, were summer taxes paid on this property? So there's outstanding taxes. Was that, was the tax bill before or after the receivership, anybody know?
Well, it went out July one.
The June twenty-ninth.
So, so with the, with the receipt, with that. Whatever his business is, McCowsky. Miss McCowsky, so he's, the taxes are his responsibility. That'd be correct. It's a question.
Yeah. That would make sense, yeah.
Okay.
That's how we're involved, is if they owe us money to the township.
But I mean, fortunately, Magda's out, just for over the county for eventual collection, then we'll get paid out for that in March, so. Even if they don't pay it, we will get our money in March.
So I'd like to continue with my question.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
So, the scenario I was giving, trying to relate was. This gets resolved and what you're saying is, is that the. Expectation that the reimbursement and the timeline, that all those documents that are attached to the development. That this board approved, um, really would have no bearing that even Mr. Kristofsky. Ended up being the owner again, or the other gentleman. Uh, and they said, we want, I want to, the develop, the developers, as he wants to. Continue with that original participation of the phases and the completion and all that. So, where does that put the township?
Well, assuming that you're still comfortable negotiating with them to enter into a development reimbursement agreement, which is. An assumption, right, assuming you're still comfortable doing that, then we'd have to negotiate an agreement with them. As long as you felt like the new plan, whatever it might be, in this scenario, it sounds like it pretty closely mirrors what's in there. Right, same guy comes back.
That scenario, yes.
Same guy comes back, he gets to pick up right where he left off, let's say, for the most part. Um, we would be back to the drawing board negotiating a development reimbursement agreement. And frankly, we'd have more negotiating power, because we're gonna be like.
Well, I, I would, I would agree.
Them explaining to do, right?
Yes, I would agree, the whole purpose of wanting to elevate this for discussion, so we at least have some background in the discussion. We've already had a support, so we don't have to redo this brand new after the, uh, whatever the court, the determination is, things like that. So in the other thing, uh, situation, if it's a new, if it's a new entity. Now, obviously, it's, it's, it's brand new and we have to renegotiate whatever the development plan would be. With, with the developer, you know, the contract, and the development plan could be something totally different.
Could be, and so then what we would do is, again, this is like the broad document, right, your plan. You'd have to look at what they're proposing and kind of make sure it's covered, right, at least in concept and the plan. And at that point, you might need to do some tweaks to see, to update the plan and just make sure it's the contours of the new project. Um, not necessarily big changes, but enough to make sure that it's in there.
Yeah.
Um, and then, yes, you'd be back at square one in terms of negotiating a, a development agreement with this party then.
And just a final follow-up on that, the infrastructure that's already in place, um. Would a developer then have a basis to argue that, well, that's in place? I've assumed that liability and the, um, either the settlement of the court or the purchase price. Uh, with, uh, the, um, person that was suing, so therefore, you know, I have an investment in that infrastructure. And I'm entitled to the reimbursement, as was originally intended.
At this point, no one's entitled to the reimbursement, because I don't have a signed development agreement.
Yeah, I understand, but is that, is that an argument they could make?
They could, but it'd be a waste of money, and they're not afraid to litigate, so.
Okay. Other questions? I do. At what point? We were talking about taxes, and, uh, at what point? And how long did we wait, and part of this isn't necessarily a legal question, it's a policy question. Um, and let's say this thing drags on for two years. And we're collecting the full new increased tax full value. And according to document received back in March, which is a long time ago. We're anticipated to collect about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, now, that would have been the eighty percent cash. And if there's no development activity and there's no development agreement. At what point do we have an obligation to pass that money on to the checks and jurisdictions?
So that's really a policy decision, legally you don't have any obligation. They, and believe me, the, the attorneys that represented those tax and jurisdictions are very familiar with these agreements.
Correct.
Um, when they enter those agreements, they, they know that they're in it for the long-term payoff, right? Because in the short term, they're giving up taxes they could otherwise, um, capture, but they wanna see something happen. So, they've kind of already made that, done that risk analysis when their board came to terms with the agreement. Um, in other words, you don't have any, certainly don't have any legal obligation to go back to them and say, hey, this portion of our plan isn't panning out. Like we thought initially right now, but it might, that would be, I think they'd say, well, talk to us in two years. Because there, most of them have to wait quite a few years before they start to capture again. I mean, and they've already kind of set it aside as a long-term investment. I don't know if that answers your question, but there's, there's no legal obligation for you to pass anything through to them. Other than what you've already agreed to, regardless of how much is coming in. And I know what you're thinking, well, but we suggested that this development was gonna happen, but I think. You just don't know yet, it still might, it's such an unknown at this point, um, that it would be jumping the gun to say, you know. Give them more, undo the agreement, which is essentially what you would have to do to give them more back, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, and that's, that's what I said, it's a policy question, and at what time would that be, I, I just don't know, and we have the litigation and all that. But it seems to me, if there's, if we're five years down the road and there's nothing happening, and that hundred eighty-four is gonna be a lot larger number. At that time. We're not gonna reimburse, yes, if we make a policy decision, but for, for the infrastructure that's already in place in phase one. Then what is it gonna be used for, does this sit in escrow, and if so, for how long?
It wasn't, it's not, um, if it's not reimbursed to the developer, it gets to be used for other things. So it's not like it's earmarked for the developer, if it doesn't, he didn't produce on his end. So you can use it in your district, so.
It, it would, if, if nothing is happening in five years, it won't be, it, it'll stay roughly around the same capture. So the only way it goes up is if new development is added to it. Well, but that's, that's the capture for each year, it would be for each year, sometimes you have five, for example, right, that's. Six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, for example, but what you're saying, so I understand, is that it's, doesn't really matter that the local. Taxing jurisdictions, jurisdictions, including Delta Township, gave it up. And it can be used for reimbursement, or it could be used for projects, is that what you're saying?
Right, so what they, what they understood going into this is that, you know, these are projections being made. And yeah, you, you capture what you're capturing, is it one eighty years, is that what you said? That's not, you know, peanuts, um, and it can turn around and be invested in the district, consistent with all the other things in the plan. And yeah, that developer didn't benefit from it.
Right.
He, but you give that up and you don't come through with your end of the deal, and he didn't so far, so it could still happen. But, um, it would be, I, you know, I can't imagine after all the work you went through, like shutting down the district. Not that you're suggesting that, but you know what I mean, or really backtracking, because there's still a lot of benefit to be had here for the whole district. And I truly believe that some developer, someone's gonna come through and finish this project, and then the value's gonna go up. That's why the plans are as long as they are too, to give these projects the opportunity to be finished, so. Um, in terms of other taxing jurisdictions, you know, I don't know if they've reached out to you, shown concern. But this is a fresh, you know, plan, this happened quickly, right? And so my guess is that they're probably gonna sit back and wait and see.
It was just a thought.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's a policy question.
Yeah, and you could always amend those, yes, if your board voted to, yeah.
I think one of the things that we, we did hear when we were working with those jurisdictions is, is the idea of an investment. Right, understanding that the East End needs a refresh, that there's gonna be a possibility for a street redesign, a second on highway. And that's gonna be a significant investment, it's expensive. I think they, I, at least my impression was, and Brian, you were there too, is that they, they understood it was an investment to make sure that the. The tax base stays strong, um, knowing, for example, Lansing Mall was declining and what happens. And so to make sure it's at least, at a minimum, there, all their other tax dollars that they're collecting, at least stay constant, if not increase.
Correct. They're, they're realizing some value, because there is the pass rule of the twenty percent. Um, but Suzanne is right in terms of, when we worked with the other jurisdictions, that was a big selling point. Of leveraging any capture to try to help with projects on, on the corridor, which. Is, you know, four miles of aging corridor, so.
So, um, what obligation does our board or does our CIA board have to make sure that they are taking that money? And investing it in a way that the taxing jurisdictions are realizing some kind of return? The idea was that they would make more taxes by having this huge development, and well, if that doesn't happen, we want to invest. So that, you know, they do see some return, uh, you know, what is our obligation for that, or how hard should we push for something like that?
Well, you should definitely, I mean, and, and this varies a lot too, some of these taxing jurisdictions are more aggressive than others. But I agree with you to the extent that you're capturing money, you're supposed to spend it, absolutely, you're supposed to. Uh, within, again, the elements set forth in your plan, um, and within the actual district itself. Um, and within your list of authorized power in the statute, so. But absolutely, um, an inactive tax capture district does draw scrutiny from. Does draw scrutiny from the state, and so more than ever lately, so you absolutely have a duty to plan. Things and spend the money.
Okay, so we shouldn't wait on this litigation, we should do what.
No, I mean, I certainly wouldn't, no, no.
I think this is a good point to bring in Suzanne into the discussion, you know, obviously. We have a corridor improvement authority with a whole plan for the entire corridor. That has a lot of other projects and stuff in it, this whole thing wasn't just about the Delta Crosses, it's about, you know, the whole. The whole rest of the corridor, and you know, in the original. Corridor improvement plan, there was, you know, all sorts of other things that we wanted to invest money in. Um, you know, where the Saginaw gets repaved by MDOT, possibly adding things to that. Making it look better, uh things out, pedestrians, things like that, so I think that was a good time to kind of. Talk about the rest of the corridor and the work of that uh authority and the remaining work and stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah, as as you mentioned, there was there was a lot of other things in that plan, everything from. Um, market studies to know where you want to see the kind of development to, you know, and to encourage it. To physical improvements and investments in infrastructure, um we know, for example, uh. Proceeds, we we had mentioned in there the idea of, you know, Lansing Mall, that if there's gonna be redevelopment, there's gonna be. There's gonna need to be an infrastructure investment, because the the infrastructure is aging and it's not in good condition, so, um and and that really. Redevelopment's not cheap, and so the idea of taking the new development money to put into redevelopment efforts. Um, and to facilitate that, really, that was kind of the one of the foundational concepts that was involved. Um, given that the corridor improvement authority did not have. Um, a lot of money, because it's their first year. We took a tact of uh making sure that they were still convening and active and engaged, because. Don't want all of a sudden everybody to disappear and then try to reengage them. Uh, so we held a series of listening sessions, and you received the memo that identified the. Different listening sessions that we had, and it was really an opportunity to identify community partners as well, to start to build relationships and. Um, I think probably one of the ones that was most interesting was other corridor improvement authorities that we had brought in, so they could share their experiences of how. Uh, one example is given of a partnership they did with CADA and MDOT to get some crossings uh in the in their core. So that it was safe, that's really what those partnerships look like, and um so the group. Met uh with, you know, I talked about housing, Ted was great, I'm giving you this, you know, this perspective from. Sassing and I worry investments are happening and how that change is occurring elsewhere along the corridor. Uh, had two different transportation sessions, one with MDOT and the Road Commission. The other one more non-motorized disability network, um CADA, uh. E-Trans, am I saying that right? Yeah, so there was, you know, trying to bring everybody bicycle bicycle interest to the table, uh just to have some different. It was kind of like, you don't know, like. Like the, you know, honeybee and elephant run by dinner time, right, this is a massive thing, and how do we decide what's most important, and so. Um, today actually was their last meeting of the year, and we talked about placemaking and. And how do all the things that we talked about kind of all get put together in different ways? And how do we think about it, and how do we prioritize those, so. Uh, they are anxious to get going on the new year, thinking about that, and having. Perhaps, you know, a a new member or two, uh as they look at attendance uh added, and then. Um, you know, conversations with CADA and MDOT in particular, it really came up. Tony was just here, but he he really emphasized the point, I think of second a highway, you know, and MDOT's work. Uh, there is programmed, uh it's not a ways out, but really, if you think about when you have to be planning. Road improvements, it's three years before it's supposed to happen, and then if you're going to have any community engagement or any design work, it's before that, so. It will be here before you even know it, and uh thinking about that is almost the spine of the corridor, and how do you identify? Key nodes along the corridor that you could facilitate additional investment or kind of kind of reimagining certain components. There's there's parts, you know, because of property ownership, but and whatnot, that. Things, not everything's gonna change, right, as Ken pointed out, but um. Where can we get some energies, especially connections with the neighborhoods behind the corridor? Um, how do we link those together and really view them as a resource? Uh, and view the corridor as an opportunity uh to provide them access to jobs and and especially if we can make a multimodal. Corridor, then mobility, um, you know, I gave the example of a similar corridor, which has actually had. More significant disinvestment. Uh, and they found that twenty percent of the households surrounding the corridor did not want a car. And so looking at the data and understanding the constituents, and then how do we. Reach those people and and really create something that benefits everyone in Delta Township. Uh, I think really will be the focus, and I think that's a strong commitment on the part of the. Authority Board members, that they're they're very concerned about making sure that there's input. Um, but they want to start those conversations, I know a couple of them are very anxious to start the conversations, but also. Want to be careful about not overpromising and underdelivering.
While you're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for the litigation to work itself out. Not know who's best to answer this, but are there um? Any developments that. Um, appear to be or may be materializing with the my guy property that's as part of the corridor?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, um, so we. We've been approached on that property several times, and um. I say, right now, the um, I guess the holdback on that has been the ownership. Uh, you know, previously my guide, and then the estate. Uh, it's our understanding that the estate now has. Changed hands, and they're looking to um liquidate that property quicker. Um, which may uh facilitate the development um a lot quicker, which. Is ideal for us, that's one area where we don't have a lot of utility constraints, um. So, and we do have a consent judgment on that property, so we have a little more control in terms of what we see there. It's not, you know, dramatically different than, you know, it's commercial along the main roads and then uh housing and. Multi-family housing and office space, so. Um, so I I think that there will be more um folks interested in that property. Uh, but I I don't have an update on where that's at with the estate, I just. And I know, and and I can't confirm it, but it's my understanding that it has changed hands from Joe Costello, who was. Trustee and the trustee of the estate.
Okay. So are you saying that the that the estate has been sold?
Not sold, the uh heirs of the estate, so some of the groups. Were unhappy with the length of. Uh, well, they're outside of the family, they're organizations outside of the.
Right, but there's some family in a broad network of organizations.
Yeah, I I don't know who who are all the parties of the trust, but. Whoever was was unhappy with the amount of time it was taking to liquidate the property.
And so we had heard was that the expectations, the price expectations were not reasonable.
So their interest is. Getting the property sold and moving on, um.
Because they don't get any money until it gets sold. All these beneficiaries of his will are waiting for their honey. They got a nice deal they could look at.
He has a lot, their the estate has a lot more land than just that piece.
Right, correct.
That's the one that's in the corridor.
Yes. There's a, yeah, there's another piece behind the mall, connected to Sharp Park. Um. I remember if there's any other.
That's it, right?
They wanted, those were the only two in the township property too. It's got one in right in the middle of it.
But they're owning it as it was built.
Right, right, so it was unreasonable, but yeah.
I think that's the, and we talked about a little bit with the Hyde property, is that um. Having a vision for the corner, what do you want to see there? Um, and it may be different than it was when the consent judgment was done, you know, I, um. These ideas of of building nodes and neighborhoods and and having some density in those areas, right, to provide the jobs. And the residents to be able to support the businesses surrounding the corridor. Um, is, you know, is is a strong one, and it's been proving out, you know, when you look at healthy corridors, and. So, um, I think that was some of the interests, like, well, what what goes there, and even though there's a consent judgment. Maybe it would make sense to allow something more or something different. Things have changed since COVID, the office market is gone, right, so. Uh, what does that look like, but but for the township to be able to say, these are our expectations for the kind of development. Kind of quarter we're gonna have, it can be very powerful uh to be able to get what you want, if you can't articulate what you want. Won't get it, so, um, I think it's key. So was there anything that the board heard from all these listening sessions that's not in the development plan that they would like to pursue? Would we have to put that into the development plan? I don't think there was anything that they heard that wasn't in the development plan, we wrote it, we kind of did a whole kind of. Kitchen sink approach, just to make sure that there, you know, there wasn't anything that they couldn't do, I mean. Some of them, like one CIA has, they included all the parcels in their district, we only included the two. So they provided like facade grants and things like that, there was an, you know, interest expressed by the authority board for that, and and that's a whole different. Follow-up, so we've been clear on that, that you know, it's these two persons where you can spend money, or. You know, if it's infrastructure related, anything public, according to the list, and that's eligible, and so I think that's clearly understood.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's probably the only distinction that's not in our list of projects is like facade. Private investment into a building and and Suzanne said, then we would have had to capture from all the projects and. Only we're doing the projections, at that point, we had negative value for a lot of the um. Uh, a lot of the corridors, it really did not do us any good to try to, you know, capture from. Like the mall per se, because the value is declining. The um, we we can talk about development stuff, but I personally think that the Saginaw Highway uh redevelopment. The road itself is probably gonna be the most transformational. Thing that will happen in Delta Township in the generation or more, so um. When it comes to supporting businesses and the twenty percent, I don't have autos. Uh, what kind of businesses there along the whole part of Saginaw, I mean, there's a pawn shop, there's uh, you know, fast food, you know. I'm, there's not even a coffee shop around there, anything, anything that's conducive to like a sense of community. You know, and and I don't know if the CIA board's even thought about that at all. And I assume that you also have your uh. You would have your priorities of where you want to start spending money on projects, you know, the studies, for example, I would imagine you prior. Prioritize those things.
So that's the plan for the new year is to give them a menu of items to choose from. Uh, you know, levels of community engagement and types of projects, so they can. And start to decide on where they want that directed, now that they've had an opportunity to hear from stakeholders and other entities along the corridor. And get some of that perspective, now they're kind of poised to go, okay, well, we think, you know, based on everything we've learned this past year. This is where we should be headed, so that's maybe the next stage.
This is an inside baseball question when it comes to process, so forgive me, but um if there's a different. Different development in the phases for Delta Crosses. Does that even come before the board, because I just go to the planning commission?
It's a good question, Dennis, I. I guess it depends on uh what type of development is, I I think. Uh. I think for the most part, it would go in front of the planning commission, the site plan approval.
So we really would have a. Say or view or any, even a public hearing or anything like that, right?
Yeah, unless they need a resoning or special land use. I'm trying to think what else comes, so. But we, the board, yeah, but we resoned it pretty liberally, if I remember right.
Usually does a text on map change those legislative body, but I don't know how you guys do, you do special land uses for the board? You don't have to.
Just my last comment, Suzanne, you you mentioned. You mentioned the excitement of getting involved next year, you know, and possibly having new members, you know, could you expand on that?
Well, Chris Kostowski is one of the members um that has not had good attendance, and we have the bylaws, and so. Um, they're definitely gonna look at uh who's been attending and who's not, there's another member. Who I think has been maybe one meeting. Um, a business owner, so I think kind of just going through and having that discussion.
Okay, yeah, take a sign.
How do we do that, because it is not. Trying to remember when we said. They had the discussion of the board like two years ago, um. Is there not someone from Delta Process required to be on, no?
Just a number of businesses, that that number of businesses that own property has to stay consistent, but who they are.
Okay. They did, and and so we'll have to look at who, you know. The business and property under composition versus outside, because you're allowed to do a couple outside people, and um one of the conversations today was. Um, you know, how do we stay in touch with MDOT or CADA, or you know, how do we continue those, and so part of it is if there's an opportunity, that might be. A stakeholder include so that they're constantly at the table. Uh, we also talked about if there's a planning process, maybe the group runs its membership, just. Not membership, but they create kind of a steering committee, they're all part of the steering committee, but they ask people. Who could be key stakeholders that they've come across during the past year, that they think would be valuable for their insights and potential partnerships to to add to the group, so. They'll be both looking at the membership of the CIA, but also potentially a steering committee composition.
So the steering committee would not be voting members?
You could have voting members on this year, you could just recraft it as, you still have to notice it, because you have a quorum, but. You could say we want others for the purposes of. Non-direct CIA related business, but for the planning process, we want to add a couple other people to the table. To make sure that they're included in the discussions. So it's still a CIA meeting, but they'll, they would do their normal business.
Are not.
Not official.
Voting members, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, ladies, we definitely appreciate it, it's been a great um discussion in terms of helping us understand where things stand and where they're going. We'll have to sit, wait, see what happens, see, hopefully, keep our fingers crossed by March, or actually in some type of uh. Direction where all this is going, and it's just.
So, doing another deep dive, definitely, now that we know about these cases, kind of keep an eye on it, if somebody. Gets exposed to it, or if I need to change my leadership, I will sort of let, right now, I mean. But you know which direction it's heading, so.
And I think actually from the CIA board perspective, it's it's not necessarily a bad thing if this is delayed, from the standpoint that. You're gonna have development there, but how much you end up reimbursing if you choose to do so. Um, as the CIA board gets further down the road and and figures out projects and other things, that might inform. Other, you know, the agreement in the future, I don't know, it's just, you know, it's all timing, it's all speculative, and that's the difficulty with doing. Development plan, all that, it's it's your best guess, right, and so the more information you're able to get. Um, you know, as you go down the road, then you can make better decisions, so I think um for the board, it gives them an opportunity to get more information.
I think the only immediate issue is in in my book, it's just. I would like to see some resolution to be at home, have constructed a building, that that's the problem of.
That was my.
The 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 rest of the development, sure, we we wanted to see a nice development, but if that doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but you know, having a half. Built building standing there is an issue, so I'd like to see that somehow resolved, do it through through the litigation, somebody get. Control of that, and something happens with it.
You do have some options with regard to that, they're not gonna be particularly satisfying, but um. But um I just summarize them actually, and I'll send Brian the list, and he can share it with you, like under your code, you can do this, you can do that. Again, it's not gonna be very satisfying. You can make it secure.
Yeah, that's my concern, is that it's a safety issue.
Make it secure, and then, and I don't know when the existing site plan, when it would have expired.
As long as they've been working on it, usually it's twelve months, it depends on what's on their ordinance, but the building permit also has a clock to it.
Okay, because then.
Okay, because then when they, when they, two years, two years.
So when they go beyond those and those have expired, you can start, you know, you can start finding them on a daily basis. Honestly, so that, you know, if he wants to. Somebody, again, not totally satisfying, but ultimately you could even need the property, right? So there are ways to pick away at this, and.
So, so I'm going to just ask a little further clarification on my tax question that I had. So the I family, under whatever name they are unified, so they now. They've always had the tax responsibility for the yellow portion of the map. So that that has not changed.
Correct.
The red portion of the map of the four or five pieces that are actually owned. By K two, formerly K two. Which is rather confusing because Miskowski was part of K two.
Correct.
Um, so, K two A. Is out and K two B is in right now, but it's still a K two financial obligation. Or whatever name Mr. Mikowski is operating under right now.
But but in part, because some of the other parcels were separately sold.
Right, so there's only like five that are that, so those ones that were sold are paying their taxes, period, amen.
Pretty sure those were all.
Period, yeah, they they pay their own, right? Yeah, you don't mean the one purpose by the receiver, you mean the ones that have already helped it, yeah. They pay, it's basically anything in the name that was still the name of West Lansing, like anything like that, but. But yeah, the the ones that were individually sold are the most part of paid, I can't tell you every one. But technically, they're not, they may be late, they might.
They're not, right.
But it doesn't affect how much, I mean, you know, the CIA is that, I mean, will get their money once the county pays us out, but they have a receiver. Whatever, eight thirty one North Margaret Blazes, you know, that still has four thousand dollars, that's. Out there right now, okay.
Great, okay, well, thank you, thank you very much, ladies. Folks, have anything else this evening, somebody from here? Okay, I'll see you, no further than this before, spirit.